All right, everyone. Let's call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order for November 26th. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the regular planning commission from October 22nd to 2018. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the minutes? Okay, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda. So if you have any feedback or anything you'd like to share for items that are not on the agenda, this is your time to do so. Next item would be approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any changes to the agenda? No, all in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So our first item is a public hearing, which is a public hearing in consideration of a variety of land use approvals related to a proposal to construct 179-unit apartment building on the north side of 66th between Queen and Russell Avenue. Staff.
Thank you. Broadway Investors has submitted an application for a planned unit development of a four-story, 179-unit apartment building on the north side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenues. This site has been designated for high-density housing for many years, dating back to the 1982 Comprehensive Plan. The developer first presented three preliminary concepts to the planning commission and city council at a work session on August 20th of this year. Policymakers indicated a desire for the developer to seek neighborhood input, to consider connectivity from the neighborhood to 66th Street, the massing of the building along 66th Street, and the potential impact of headlights entering and exiting the parking area. At a September 8th neighborhood open house, the developer presented a revised plan for the 179-unit option that reoriented the parking entrance away from the adjacent neighborhood and reintroduced a roadway connection via Russell Avenue. Based on feedback from these two meetings, the developer submitted preliminary plans for staff review in early October, and then incorporating staff's technical and design feedback, revised plans were submitted along with land use applications on October 25th. These plans were presented at a second neighborhood open house on November 3rd, and then after incorporating additional suggestions from the neighborhood and staff related to building materials and a building step-back at the northwest corner, there's a typo in the report there, it said northeast, it should've said northwest, the developer submitted revised plans for consideration by the planning commission. The proposed development site and building are attractively designed with tree-lined streets and minimal views of surface parking areas, and building materials that are contemporary but complementary to the surrounding area. The proposed building provides a number of amenities to its residents, including a pool, fitness center, bicycle storage room, community rooms, and an outdoor dog run along the east side of the building behind CVS. In response to the grade changes throughout the site, which leave the below-grade parking level exposed along 66th Street, the proposal includes a storefront appearance to the bicycle and fitness amenity areas to help activate that 66th Street street scape. Two underground parking levels provide parking at ratios that meet city code requirements. In conjunction with the planned unit development application, the developer is also requesting to vacate Queen Avenue between 65th and a half and 66th Street. In exchange for vacating Queen Avenue through the site, the developer would extend Russell Avenue approximately 200 feet to the south, intersecting with 66th Street. Without the vacation of Queen Avenue, the three parcels that are guided for high-density residential would remain on the east side of Queen Avenue. These three parcels on their own are unlikely to be redeveloped due to their size and unusual shape. While the proposed change in roadway alignments would allow a development on the combined site to move forward while still maintaining local traffic circulation via the Russell Avenue extension. Russell Avenue would include a tree-lined sidewalk between 65th and a half and 66th Street. These proposed roadway changes have been reviewed by Richfield and Hennepin County Public Works Departments. Our city engineering staff will continue to work with the developer on the specific design of the Russell Avenue extension. A study of how traffic in the area is expected to flow is attached to this report. And in addition to meeting the technical requirements of the city and the policies identified by the recently adopted Comprehensive Plan, the proposed development meets a number of policies discussed in the market rate multifamily housing policy statement, which was adopted by the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority back in 2015. This policy statement includes a preference for projects that are located in areas near commercial and retail uses, projects that are no more than four stories in height, projects that provide a mix of unit sizes and amenities, and those that promote community and an active lifestyle via gathering spaces, pet areas, access to trails, bicycle amenities, et cetera. The current proposal is a result of an iterative process that has allowed for feedback from policymakers, neighbors, and staff. Staff finds that the proposed project meets the intent of the Comprehensive Plan and code requirements, and is therefore recommending approval of the proposed project. That concludes the staff report. Staff will stand for any questions you may have, and then the developer and their team are here as well for any questions you have of them. Thank you.
Does the commission have any questions for staff at this time before we have the developer come up? No?
I do.
Okay, Commissioner Quan?
What is meant by, the developer is also requesting to vacate Queen Avenue, and then it says, "In exchange for vacating Queen Avenue, the developer will extend," I understand extending Russell, but what do you mean vacate Queen Avenue? What does that mean?
So vacating, I guess, is the technical term for removal of that piece of Queen Avenue between 65th and a half and 66th Streets? So that stretch of Queen Avenue currently kind of runs at a diagonal, right through the middle of the proposed development site. So the city would essentially abandon Queen Avenue, the underlying land where that stretch of Queen Avenue is today would be given to the developer in exchange for an easement for the Russell Avenue extension.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask, in the same vein, does the city have to pay for the other half of that Russell Avenue right-of-way, or where does that come from? That would be on the Frazier property currently.
It's indicated, I think it's indicated in the developer's narrative, but they've met with the Frazier administration, and Frazier has agreed to grant an easement over the west half of that Russell Avenue. So the west half would be, Frazier would remain the underlying property owner, but it would be dedicated to the city as an easement. The east half of the road would be, Broadway Investors would dedicate to the city when they plat the properties.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we have the developer? Okay, would the team like to speak? And please state your name and address.
Good evening. Todd Olin, 13076 First Street, Becker, Minnesota. First of all, I'd like to thank you for hearing this application. I'd also like to thank everyone involved in their involvement with the application. We not only had planning commissioners, the chair show up at neighborhood meetings, staff was very minimal to working with us through the whole course of this project with various meetings and coordination, interpreting, zoning and whatnot, as well as neighborhood involvement at a couple different meetings we held. With that, a great deal of planning went into this. This started about two years ago, I'm not going to bore you with all the details, but it started about two years ago, 2016, with a dream and a concept. Through the course of time, it evolved. Of course, we met with staff, we met with your planning, met with neighbors, incorporated changes into the plans, and the project as a whole, as it's being submitted, is a comprehensive view of all those different people, key people involvement. We even had the mayor at a neighborhood meeting and mayor-elect. So the involvement's been very much appreciated. The project basically includes 179 units of market rate apartments, and they're going to range from about 500 to 1,200 square feet, various different types of units. The general, when we went and got familiar with the neighborhood and looked at what the character was there, the Comprehensive Plan calls for specific densities and whatnot, but we also were looking at the existing character that we wanted to implement into this design to keep as low an impact as possible, keep the neighborhood quiet as it is now. So what we did was, we designed a development here that had activities for active residence in the center of the project as opposed to around the periphery of the project. And so the center courtyard area, for example, has a pool, and it has an activity area, a place to congregate and mingle, and basically provide a place to live, work, and play. People can live near their work, not travel too far to and from, but also have activities and a place to live. We tried to take the approach with the design of the exterior, what seemed by all that drive-by is more of a neighborhood-framed street, neighborhood street with trees that line both sides. There are existing trees that are around the perimeter, but we also are putting street trees along the entire 66th Street, front edge of the Russell Street extended, so on and so forth. But one of the key design elements that we tried to incorporate, too, was to mitigate impacts to all the neighbors by extending Russell to 66th Street, and thereby eliminating the possibility for light wash to go into neighbors' houses and whatnot. We're approximately, by the way the grades work out, we're approximately 12 feet lower than the adjacent Frazier building. So when cars enter and exit, the lights will be cast into the sidewall of a retaining wall in the bank that will be constructed as a result of the project. As stated, we're trying to incorporate as much of a neighborhood feel in this and also have a direct connect to 66th Street. So we did a great deal of work on trying to, again, implement low-impact design standards, stay within your Comprehensive Plan and your vision there that was adopted many years ago, and then reviewed and adopted again here in October of 2018. Rather than go through a lot of details and basically repeat what staff has already gone through, we have the architect, the developers, and myself here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for the developer at this time? Commissioner Quan?
Yeah, I do have questions for the developer. You know, first of all, I really do appreciate the work that you guys have put into this, and I really, you know, I think, full disclosure, you know, I do live directly adjacent to the property that's going in. I am, you know, fairly pro-density, but I'm also smart-density about this, and you know, I think you guys have, you know, this has come a long way since it's initially proposed. I think, you know, given the site and what we're left with, if this thing's going to go to the full, you know, Design C from what your three options were originally when this thing happened, you know, I think it's, you know, I think it solves a lot of technical problems for you guys, but at the same time, it doesn't solve a lot of problems for the neighborhood, and it kind of opens up some other issues that we've been trying to resolve through this iterative process. And I appreciate you guys for, you know, trying to listen through this process and incorporating some of these changes into your development and your designs and everything else like that for the, you know, especially for the exterior and how, you know, the drives are oriented and things like that. I still, I still think that there is potential for some change. This is what I just passed out to you guys, for actually limiting height on the residential side, on the single-family side, and adding height on the 66th corridor, and potentially the east side as well against the CVS, potentially. And, you know, I don't know if this comes in the form of an amendment, or if this comes in the form of, or in the form of more time for you guys to go through this option and thoroughly vet it, but, you know, if you can convince me now that it's not worth pursuing, I'd be glad to listen as well, you know? But I think my amendment would be to, you know, I think, I'm not going to propose amendment right now, but I think what I'm looking for is, you know, three floors on the 65th and a half side and that northwest corner, and then adding, you know, for the unit loss that you get from removing that floor, you would add the fifth floor on 66th and CVS. So I just, if you can comment on that potentially, I know I kind of put you guys on the spot for this because this is very last minute, but I just, I would like to kind of hear your comments and feedback on that.
I understand and appreciate that. Mr. Chair?
I do just want to say, you know, just procedurally, we could do the public hearing if more time in this meeting would allow you to prepare for that. If you're prepared to answer the statement of what this potential amendment would mean now, you can go ahead and do so. But I do acknowledge that this would be a change to your project, so if you want 30 minutes or whatever to prepare, that would be fine as well.
I don't normally do this, but what I'd like to request, if I could ask your staff a question about procedure?
Okay, go for it.
Yeah, if, being that it's a PMR proposed, if we were to make a change like this, being three levels in the back, five levels in the front, would it in fact require a variance, or can this be done under the PMR proposal?
Members of the planning commission, that could be done under the terms of a PUD. If the planning commission amended the proposed amendment, that would be a reasonable, a reasonable amount of flexibility to incorporate in a PUD. That doesn't answer the question of whether or not it's feasible for you, but it would be technically feasible.
Thank you. At this point, if we could just request a 10-minute recess to discuss this amongst ourselves, or however.
Chair Hayford-Liery, I think what you suggested procedurally to, unless the commissioners have other sort of initial opening technical questions for the developer, I think procedurally, what you were suggesting, moving on to the public hearing and then coming back to, after the public hearing, coming back to dialogue between the commission and the development team would probably be appropriate.
Yeah, I think that, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, I think I'm basically saying, I wonder if we could have the public hearing based on the submitted application. The commission can discuss the amendment after the public hearing is closed, and that would also give the applicant time to review the proposal and be prepared to respond exactly what that would mean for them. Is that agreeable to you?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I still have some preliminary questions I think they could answer even before the...
Absolutely.
Okay.
I apologize, I got distracted by this item. Commissioner Quan?
At the work session with the planning commission and the city council, you showed us three plans, and this is the highest density of the three, correct?
I'm sorry I wasn't present, but I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay, and your comment a couple times about trying to choose the lowest possible impact on the surrounding area, but you're choosing the highest possible of the three. I'm wondering why the other two aren't feasible options? I thought they were more attractive.
Again, I'm sorry I wasn't present at those meetings, but...
Can one of the others answer who was?
Mr. Weingarten.
Okay, thank you.
I think the reason that we chose this option is simply because of how the site lays out. If we choose either of the first two options, we leave islands, which inside of the city's Comprehensive Plan doesn't get the highest and best use for what you guys are looking for in the future.
Where are you leaving islands specifically?
So it'd be on the east side of Queen, there's three properties. So if we did either A or B, those two that went up onto 65th and a half with the property on 2412, if we did either of those two projects, we leave that island on the other side of Queen, and it can never be, and nothing could ever really be done with it because of how the lot lays out. Does that make sense?
Yes, but you originally considered that in two of the plans, even though there were islands. I mean, you saw that when you made the plans, right?
Yep, that's how we were instructed to do it.
Okay. My other question is, the, I'm concerned about all those mature trees. It's such a beautiful strip of large trees, and I heard it's tree-lined streets, but are you pulling out, would you pull out all the mature trees along 66th and replace them with those two to two-and-a-half-inch diameter saplings, basically? Are you proposing taking out all those mature trees because they have a beautiful effect along there?
They do, and I would agree with you. In most cases, we do everything we can to save what's there, and unfortunately, on this particular site, there's a great deal of grade difference throughout the site. There's about a 12-foot difference from the west side to the east. So to answer your question in short, yes, we are taking trees out within the project area and replacing them with new trees.
All of the mature trees along 66th would come out?
Anything that's outside the right-of-way, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I have, do you have signed purchase agreements from all six of those properties that are around there?
We do.
All six of them?
We do.
Okay. And another thing, and this might be a staff question, but, and probably wouldn't even come to us unless you've lived through it, but I have acquaintances that have lived through some bigger developments like this, and they had some issues with water pressure when a big development came in close to their neighborhood. Is our water system equipped to handle another 180 homes in that area?
Commissioner Rosenberg, our utilities department has reviewed the preliminary plans, and they will work together with the developer to appropriately size those new utilities, so there should not be any change to water pressure.
And I know, I live in that area, too, and so that's, it was a concern, and something that I would never think of unless you've lived through it. But that is something that the people in the neighborhood that I know have asked me about, so. So the water department has reviewed these plans and have passed on it?
Commissioner Rosenberg, at this time, the plans are fairly preliminary on the utility side. The developer often doesn't go into the full extent of those details until a project is approved because it's very costly. But the preliminary plans have been reviewed, the utilities department has made contact with the developer, and if the project moves forward, they will work together to make sure that the utilities are the right size for the project and the surrounding neighborhood.
Okay. You know, he keeps, he's talking about impact on the neighborhood in regards to the smaller plans. What would we have done if we hadn't, they couldn't have gotten all those purchase agreements done? Would they have to read, I mean, how would you, I mean, it's not an either-or. So if we would've had the smaller plans, smaller apartments, how would we have coped with that? I mean, we would've designed it in some way so that those unusual-sized parcels would've been incorporated in some way. I mean, I feel like the developer thinks they're doing us a big favor, and I don't know if that's a big favor or not, but that's, we would've coped with that, or we would've changed the design in some way, wouldn't?
Commissioner Rosenberg, I'll try to give you, I'm going to give you a technical answer. There are three parcels on the east side of Queen Avenue. They're shown on page 20, for instance, in your pocket. Those properties are an unusual in shape and size because of the way that Queen Avenue is oriented.
I've drawn out them many times, I know all about.
Right. So that entire area is guided for high-density housing. When you guide an area for high-density housing, you don't necessarily talk about if roads are going to stay, if things might be reoriented. Those three parcels on their own, if the smaller development were proposed, would likely have to be reguided to something else. On parcels that size and that shape, it would be nearly impossible to do a high-density housing project on its own. The developer approached those property owners and has purchase agreements, and so applied for a project that would incorporate them, rather than leave them as something that, as they're guided right now, is virtually unbuildable.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Is it all Commissioner Rosenberg? Commissioner Rosenberg, is that, did you have any additional questions?
Excuse me?
Did you have any additional questions?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry. Commissioner Rudolph, were you?
I've got a question for the developer. I wasn't able to make the meeting that you had with city staff and the planning commission, but did you look at seeing how close in height it is with the, at a three-story building instead of a four? Did you look at reducing the height of the building in your multiple-phase plans that you looked at?
Did we look at a building that just had three levels as opposed to four?
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the height of four stories being across the street. You know, I've got a development going in across the street from me at three stories and seeing the height that, and impact that that has on the neighborhood.
We looked at a host of different alternatives, some that had, you know, different layouts, different configurations, and then went through a process of meeting with neighbors. What this particular development does is, we used the Comprehensive Plan as a guide, and this is a guide that was set forth by the city that set height requirements, that set density requirements. So that's really what our guide was, is the city Comprehensive Plan. And beyond that, is it desirable for the developer to do these, to do this, based on those requirements? For example, if the master plan called for a medium density, that, of course, would be a host of different requirements and goals and so forth for any developer to approach and look at the pros and cons and risks and all the different things that go involved, they're involved in it. With the Comprehensive Plan, again, this is slated for that high density, it's also slated to the north of this, so, you know, without getting, what could happen there, we don't know, but it is planned to be extended further to the north. And so while something might be a little taller along 66th, the way I'm looking at, again, opinions differ, but I'm a firm believer in development should happen where it should happen, and we have a very busy street there, and it does provide a separation from 66th and the residents to the north. It's also a transition from the CVS to the properties to the north, and so, you know, when you look at a development transect, if you will, you know, where you have a relatively busy 66th Street, or even if you want to take Penn into consideration, the density should be where those services are and where people want to get out and go to work and so forth and so on. So we, you know, all the services are, a lot of them are within walking distance of this development. Another way I look at this planning for high-density and height and whatnot, having done this for quite a while, I generally walk along the road and I don't generally look up. People are affected by the things that are around them, so their orientation, you know, if I'm in Chicago, of course, you're there to look at those things, that's what the, that's what you're there for, but in everyday life, when I'm biking or walking or whatever I'm doing, generally, I'm not looking up, I would run into things if I did that. So not only is it, it's, if you, one of the things we did early on was a market study. In this particular location, or this, in the city here, one of the things that's not well-represented is the market rate apartments. So currently, it's at about 1% vacancy in the, about a five-mile radius or so, which is remarkably low. A healthy area to be in is probably 4% to 5%, maybe 6% vacancy. That means there's enough product available out there. In this case, there isn't. So with that need, do you take this parcel size, shape, and put the density, again, where I think it belongs, or do you take the same number of units and spread them over a longer, bigger area? Again, opinions vary, but in, it's, in my opinion, that you put it where it belongs and keep it near those services, near the bus line, where the Cub Foods are and the CVS Pharmacy is, and so on and so forth. So did we consider those things? We did. We looked at a lot of different options. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the developer? I guess I'm a little curious if you could just speak to what your intended, I'm kind of, we have a commissioner's absent tonight, and I'm channeling her a little bit, what your intended rents are and if there are any affordable units in the, in the building?
I'm sorry?
What, do you have any idea what the intended rents will be of the units? Like a price per square foot that's targeted, or do you have any affordable units that are income-restricted, or would these all be market rate?
It's all market rate.
Okay. And you have, do you have a targeted rate? You don't have to, it's not a land use consideration, I'm just curious if you are comfortable sharing that.
Would a range be okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we're in the range of, forgive me for cheating with my notes here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're in the 1,600 to 2,200 per unit range. And then, again, with the, going back to the market study, that falls within about, now, taking into account the last development of this nature in the city, in the west side of the city, was back in 1970, so our comparables are a little bit outside of that, but we're within 10% of other market rate units.
Yep. So would you say this is somewhat comparable to... So would you say this is somewhat comparable to the stuff across the border? Any dinah in terms of quality, or is this?
Exactly.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, or otherwise we could open the public hearing? Okay, thank you. All right, so we will open the public hearing to any members of the public who would like to give feedback on this project. If you do have any questions, we'll make note of those, but we're not able to respond to the questions during your testimony. Each person will have to come up, state their name and address at the microphone, and tell us whatever you'd like us to hear about this project. Whoever wants to go first can go for it.
My name is Ruane Nonesi-Rosan, and I'm Brian's neighbor. I live on the corner of 65th, right across kitty-corner from Sheridan School. I'm the new kid on the block in my neighborhood. I've lived there only 28 years. Most of my neighbors have lived there far longer, and they're far older than I am. This is going to disturb us tremendously. I feel for the people in Paradise, California, who are watching those oak trees being ripped down as theirs are being burned down. I feel for Mother Nature, for people who call themselves developers and are putting people out of their homes. They've been there 50 years. I don't like this. I don't like it at all. I don't like the noise, pollution, the air pollution, and everything that's going to be connected with harassing the older people who live all around me. This is cruel. It's nothing but cruel. And it's hurtful, and it hurts widows of 90 years whose only home is now going to be a massive, destructive, noisy. Don't do it, I pray. Don't do it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wes Weber, 2501 West 65th Street. Most of my concerns are among, around the traffic pattern, and I've talked to the developer about that. But the question that I had to the developer is, as well as, as you members, is whether or not it was ever considered that Sheridan, I mean, Queen be straightened out and connected to 66, rather than disrupting Russell, which has been there for, since it was, since the inception? Why is it that they want to, why is it that you want to get, get, feed part of this to the city, or however you're doing it, given the land use, rather than just taking a street in Sheridan out and have the same amount of property? I don't understand that, and it'd be a lot less disruption. The other problem I have is that because we have the cul-de-sac, there's no traffic right now, and there's going to be a terrific increase in traffic. The road is considerably narrower, Russell Avenue is considerably narrower between 65th and 66th Street than it is north of that, 10 feet narrower. I know that because the plow hits the curb, snowball hits the curb and breaks it up, and they have to come out and fix that. So it's 10 feet narrower. We can't park cars on both sides of the street and get a car through easily. In the wintertime, we can't park on both sides of the street and get a car through at all. Emergency vehicles can't get through, so that's a big concern. And I know that that'd be solved now that I've heard that you're talking about also taking Ruane's property, Donna's property, the properties north of the, of the current development for future development. So that's extremely concerning to me because that will, the neighborhood's gone. As most of you have also heard from me, is this is a particularly mature neighborhood. As Ruane said, she's been here 28 years, and she's the young couple. I've been there 41 years. This is my starter home. It's going to be my finisher home. My next-door neighbor, Bernice, has been there for 40, 45, 50 years. Donna's been there 58 years. We've got a neighborhood of people that have been there their better part of their entire lives, and we're very passionate about the neighborhood. We've talked about our neighbor's night out. A lot of people don't even know what that is. We pack it. We have all of our neighbors get there. We all watch out for each other. I understand that we need, we need to move on. And I also understand that because we're such a mature neighborhood, many of us won't be here in 10, 15, 20 years. So it doesn't matter, you know, things have to change. But it is one of these Mayberry kinds of things, that this neighborhood, these people care, we all care for each other. When the snow comes, we help each other. We take care of their property. And you don't necessarily see that anymore. And, you know, that's why it's very passionate right now among the neighborhood that we're going to do something, but do we have to do it to this extent? Thank you, Brian, for an amendment that, yes, height makes a big difference. If you're bicycling by, I'm sure it wouldn't make any difference. But if you look to the sunrise, if you happen to live across the street from it, you're not going to see a sunrise anymore. That's huge. So, you know, it's easy to see it from a development standpoint. It's easy to see it from Richfield's viewpoint, where we want high density, want to increase our tax base. It's also easy to see from Richfield's point of view that a lot of these homes haven't been updated since 1950 when they were built. So it's a great way for us to get rid of that and make our city look better. I understand that, but some of us have spent a great deal of money on our homes. And no matter what the developer's going to tell me, this, this will reduce the, you know, the value of my home. It will. I don't think that anybody that's saying can come to me and say, no, it won't. It will increase the value, because it won't. So that, besides the traffic pattern, and why couldn't we open up Queen Avenue and maintain some semblance of quietness in our neighborhood? It's the passion that we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Lucy Peterson, and I live at Fraser Sheridan Court, which is 2,500 West 66th Street. For those of you who are not familiar with Sheridan Court, it's an independent living apartment owned by Fraser. In order to qualify to live in our building, you must have a disability. Sheridan Court consists of 30 apartments with connections to HUD Section 8. It's accessible and affordable. Some of the types of disabilities represented amongst my neighbors in the building are people with physical disabilities, including wheelchair users, people with autism, Down syndrome, as well as many other diagnoses. For instance, I'm autistic, I'm Jewish, I'm transgender, I live with mental illness, mostly anxiety and depression. I make use of Social Security disability and have a CADDI waiver. I was on a waiting list for two and a half years before I was able to move into Sheridan Court. Sheridan Court is a great place to live and provides us with a safe, supportive, and accessible environment that is incredibly hard to find anywhere else in the Twin Cities. I've only had the pleasure of living in Richfield for six months, but Sheridan Court has been a lifeline for me. The two and a half years I was on the waiting list, I lived in a place that was not in all, in any way, safe for me. Building 179-unit apartment building next to Sheridan Court would put me and other residents at risk. Just one example, I have a sensory integration disorder, as most people with autism do. Due to my Sid, I have a very low tolerance level for high-pitched noise. While waiting to move here, I lived in a loud and dangerous place. After finding this awesome, quiet, and supportive place to live, I'm extremely concerned that this would change. Many of us walk to CVS to get our prescriptions. Currently, we only have to cross Queen Avenue. If you allowed them to extend Russell Avenue all the way to 66, that would be one more street we would have to cross with a big increase in traffic. With 179-unit building and the average couple having two vehicles, there could be up to 358 additional cars in that area. That makes it much more dangerous for those of us with disabilities to cross intersections. Interacting with people out in the community is a challenge for some of us. Adding 179 units would mean way more pedestrians and cars for us to navigate. Also, many of us have anxiety disorders. And adding this many people next door to us, as well as putting us through the length of the construction, means we'll have to suffer through the noise and no doubt, plenty of physical barriers. The people who live in our neighborhood are already used to interacting with the people in our building. Who would educate all of these people in how to interact with people with autism and the other disabilities in my building? This is currently a safe place for us, as few places are. Lastly, we do not want to be disregarded when deciding if the city should allow any new construction. I beg you not to make a hasty decision. Please take a respectful amount of time to really listen to all of the residents in this area, and please try to reach out to those not here tonight. Contemplate how it will affect each and every one of us, all of the people, and give a notice about this meeting in the mail deserve at least that much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patty Bergeren. I live at 2414 West 65th and 1/2 Street. My home is on the north side of the proposed development. My husband and I, we are the new kids on the block. We have lived in our home for 10 years. It was mentioned that the developer walked the neighborhood to get a neighborhood feel. We already have a neighborhood feel. We really don't need any help with that. My concern this evening is that the desires of the city and the developer be equal in weight to the desires of the homeowners. In this case, as you've heard, there are many homeowners that have occupied their homes for 50 years or more. It must be exciting for a city to look at its future. The future holds new residents to support local economy, and we all want that. The recent economic upswing has spurred development on Penn Avenue, and I must admit that feels good. But the past, that built Richfield from the ground up. And these are my neighbors, Donna Bai, Donna Jaeger, Helen and Dan, Bernice, Ruane. They have invested in Richfield by owning their homes. These residents have paid many, many years in taxes, supported, and sent their children to Richfield schools. They maintain their homes. They are a vital part of this community, and they are here to stay. The part that they have played, and that all of us play in this neighborhood, should be respected. I wonder what exactly the city would like us to think that urban hometown means. The development is extremely large in scope. Plan A, which was originally presented, was a good plan. I know the city wants this, and I have little doubt that it will be built. I am asking the city to please consider the size of the development to the scale of the neighborhood and reduce the building by one story. I believe this is a reasonable compromise. The reduced size would decrease traffic in an already stressed area, maintain the amount of sunlight that falls on neighborhoods' homes, reduce the stress on city parks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Catherine Cahill. My husband Winston and I live at 6528 Russell Avenue, directly to the west of, on the cul-de-sac. And I'm deeply disturbed by this proposed invasion of our little neighborhood. I feel, you know, you've talked about as developers, how you've walked around and considered blending in or matching in. And I don't see how four stories of an apartment building with that many apartments matches a neighborhood of one- and two-story homes. Like Patty, I'm convinced that this is probably going to go forward. But I would beg that you consider how to make it more, work with the neighborhood, work with Fraser. We live directly north of Fraser, and they're great neighbors, and we like them. And then another concern that I wanted to bring up is, if it goes forward, are there plans to monitor and mitigate effects of the construction on those surrounding houses? Given two levels of underground parking, I'm assuming there will be some kind of major activity that could affect the houses that are left. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Colleen Weber, 2501 West 65th Street. And I do have a question about, I know they came out and put in traffic counters on Russell just to see what the traffic was. And I don't know what the result of those is. One of my concerns is the Russell that continues to 66 is narrow. And those of us that live there now, if we go 65th and 1/2 and go out on Queen to 66, there's no light there. And you just don't do it during rush hour. It's not safe to try and take a left turn with no light on 66. So if this apartment is dumping onto Russell, and they can't turn left onto 66 during rush hour, they are all going to be going the other way. So then what? You know, like my husband had said, his father was a firefighter, so, I mean, we realize that in the winter, if you've got cars parked on the sides of the street, you're not getting emergency vehicles through. It's just not going to happen. And then the other thing people were talking about, height. When you're talking about a three-story apartment, it's basically four stories. Because on 65th and 1/2, the three houses that are on the 66th Street, you know, side of that, are already up a hill. So instead of going level, they're up higher than the houses across the street that would be staying. So you're not, you can't really compare, you know, three stories, because you're already starting up above. And they said they were going to leave that up, that hill that goes up there. So yeah, one of my things is traffic and how do you navigate that narrower street when you can't safely turn left onto 66 without a light? You can turn right, but there's going to be problems otherwise. So, my question.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Nick Seibert. I live at 6904 Logan Avenue South. So I'm out of the affected area. My biggest concern is the size of the building itself, and then also the impact it will have on Sheridan Hills. I have children at Sheridan Hills. There's a lot of kids that walk that route in the morning through 66th Street and a lot of bus activity. And I'm not sure that the traffic study, they did take that really into account. That's really where my question is. And again, the size, I agree with the residents. I think the size of the construction is a little daunting for that area. I know it's already zoned for commercial properties, but I feel that that would really severely impact the area and the school. I'd like to see if we are adding more units like that, units that are more affordable. I feel like the rents that he's describing are going to be outside of the realm of maybe the standard Richfield parent. And we want to bring more kids into the schools, and I'm not sure that the apartments that they're going to be renting and offering will bring in more kids and more families. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Hello, my name is Manzar Khan. I, along with my mother and a brother, we bought this house, 6539 Queen Avenue. Sits on a hill, and I'm just here to say some good things about the house and how much I like living there. We bought it in over 40 years ago, 1979 or 80. And my, some of my neighbors will attest, vouch for me, that area is so good. It has never been vandalized, burglarized, cars stolen, nothing ever happened. I even left the garage door open that much. Nothing ever happened in 40 years, and I really like it. Since then, my mother and brother passed away, and I took over the house and starting, fixed, started fixing it up. And whatever you name, I put in a new high-efficiency furnace, about eight years old, new roof, about nine years old, no about nine years old, no leaks, covered gutters. The house sits on the hill, so the basement never floods, it has never flooded. And new finish basement paneling, wood paneling, along with floor, new linoleum tile, new bathroom. All three new toilets, painted the outside and the inside of the house, two coats with primer underneath. I'm finished 90% of my refurbishing, only little bit left of trimming some big oak trees and fixing a fence that some heavy tornado-like winds came and kind of blew the fence over. I'm working on that and on landscaping the area with new grass. And I would like to live there. And I have nothing but good praises for Richfield area, at least where I live. Nothing bad ever happened. So I would like to continue living there and fix it up so it looks good. 90% done, 10% left to do. Some trimming, big trees and the fence. And it'll be a nice house. And it sits on a hill, so it never floods. We have never had basement flooded in all these years. So I'm just full of praises. I want to live there where I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one more comment. Under the required findings page under five, it says the development will not have undue adverse impacts on neighboring properties. Undue adverse impacts are not anticipated. The site and the conditions of the resolution are designed to minimize any potential negative impact on neighboring properties. Could somebody explain that to me? How do you know this?
We will add that to our questions to go through with staff at the end. I've been typing them all up right now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak before we close the public hearing? Do we have a motion to close?
Yeah, I'll move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. So I'm hoping we can go through the questions first with staff. I'll go through the ones I have, and if other commission members have other ones I've noted that I've missed, please jump in. So I'm just going in order of the folks who testified. My first question is, could you speak to the process? One of the gentlemen mentioned the narrowness of the street. Will parking restrictions be in place, or what process is there to determine if parking restrictions are needed to address that concern?
Yes, the city's traffic engineer has reviewed the proposed Russell Avenue extension. They've suggested that parking would be prohibited on, from the development down to 66th Street, parking would be prohibited on both sides of that Russell Avenue extension, both due to the narrowness of the street as well as sightlines as you approach the 66th Street intersection. As far as north, north of, north of 65th and a Half, basically between 65th Street and 65th and a Half on Russell, I don't know that any changes to the existing parking, parking regulations in that area. I assume parking is permitted on both sides of Russell there currently. But if that were, if that were found to be an issue due to that narrower, the narrower than standard width of Russell Avenue, our transportation department could look at that if there were additional parking, parking prohibitions needed.
Okay. The gentleman who lived at Sheridan Court mentioned the disturbing noise that could affect the health of some residents. Obviously, this was just affected by 66th Street. Do you have any idea how that, how that issue was managed during that construction, or how it could be managed during this construction?
Chair Haford O'Leary, we don't know how that was managed during 66th Street. I know that the developer has been in touch with Frazier, and that's something that they, if this were to go forward, they should certainly reach out and see if there was a role for them to play in that, in noise reduction, or if there were things that they could do to help minimize impacts.
Okay. And in, in general, there were general questions about construction disturbance, I think, to the structures too. Is there any way that, if there were impacts to somebody's foundations of an existing house that's remaining, that we manage that, or the developer manages that?
Right. I did have a suggestion on that. The, the project that's under construction now, the Chamberlain Apartments on the east side of town, the developer did go out and do, hired a private company to go out and do inspections of the homes in the surrounding area, take photographs and document the current condition, so that the homeowners, if there were issues, would be able to come back, and they'd be able to see, yes, indeed, there has been, something has happened here, and it's a result of the project. There would be, there would be means to make a claim. And so that's certainly something that you could include as a stipulation.
Okay. One person asked in general, what does undue adverse impacts mean in the listing of conditions? And what does that mean in staff's opinion?
Right. Undue adverse impacts is actually legal terminology. In general, it means that, that it's a great harm. The way that staff has generally looked at that in terms of approvals of applications and recommendations of approval of applications is, is the development doing everything it can to minimize any impacts? And are those impacts so great that they would, that they would significantly reduce quality of life in the surrounding area? That sort of thing. And again, that, that is obviously a matter of interpretation and opinion, but in staff's opinion, this project did not do that.
Okay. Okay, the, the public hearing is closed. Please, please hold your questions. If you have additional questions for staff, they'll be available at the end of the meeting. We had another question about the result of the traffic counters, and this might be a question for the applicants, since I assume they did that work. But I am curious if the, the factor of Russell 66 being an uncontrolled intersection versus Sheridan 66 being signalized, that was a factor of potential traffic routing to the north?
Chair Haford O'Leary, it was. It's specifically mentioned in the traffic study. This was actually a particularly thorough traffic study compared to what we usually see. It does talk about the potential for, or the, the fact that there will be difficulties turning left onto 66th Street from Russell at rush hour. That said, based on the peak traffic counts that they've estimated from this development and the existing neighborhood traffic, the estimated queuing would be one to two cars. It's not something that would back up significantly. And the peak hour traffic that they're estimating is fairly low, although on, on a street that has peak hour traffic of one to five cars, any increase is going to be significant. But the, those peak hour traffic counts are still, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, 50 and lower, 50 cars and lower. So the traffic study didn't see that as a, as a, as a large problem.
Okay, the last question I have was regarding, we had, the last testimony received was from one of the property owners on the project, and I wasn't sure how to reconcile that, that testimony with a statement from the developer that he has purchase agreements from all the property owners. If that statement were inaccurate, would, should that affect our decision in any way if he in fact did not have?
As part of the application process, the developer is required to submit a petition showing that, and proof showing that there are purchase agreements in place. We do not require actual copies of purchase agreements, but that there is an agreement in place that is submitted as part of the application. We don't check that.
Okay.
In terms of planning commission consideration, no, that is not something that you would consider. If a property owner chose not to sell to the developer, the project couldn't move forward, and they'd either, they'd have to come back to you or continue to negotiate with that person.
Okay. And just to be very clear, it is, the sales are voluntary, the developer does not have the power to compel the homeowner to sell.
That's correct, nor does the city.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other questions you, you guys heard from the public that you'd like to have staff address? Or we can move on to just questions you might have?
I just have a couple that were, I also kind of flagged through everybody's comments. Back to, I believe it was Wes's comments about Queen Avenue as an option versus now not being an option. Why, and this can be for developers, staff, both, but why was Queen ultimately ruled out? Just, you know, just looking at grade, it seems like it still can work out out the back of the northeast corner. And so I'm just, I and others are curious.
So was your question as to why? Could you restate the question? Was it as to why?
Why was Queen Avenue not an option over Russell Avenue being opened? You know, why, why can't one exit out the property, come out onto 66th Street, and one exit out the property, come out onto Queen Avenue at the northeast corner of the property? So there's still two exits out the parking ramps, there's still one onto the major thoroughfare, and there's still one leading back to the edge of the neighborhood. I think that was kind of everybody's concern, why, why Queen isn't there when, when physically it probably can work?
Sorry, are you referring to the initial, so there was kind of two, there's kind of two different things. There was, there was the initial set of proposals that were shared at the Planning Commission and City Council work session that showed, the largest of which of those options showed Queen Avenue going away, still being vacated with, with basically, with a entrance into the project, basically entrances into the project where Queen Avenue exists today, but the street's still going away. There wasn't an alternative shown that...
I guess my point is, sorry to interrupt. My point is that a lot of the residents, including, you know, myself at one point in time, had understood that, you know, Queen was at least explored as an option, and why is it not now an option? And I understand that the three other proposals, other than like, you know, the smaller ones, of course, Queen is still there. You know, we get that. But why, when you go to this 180-unit block, why can't Queen still be used over Russell? And that's kind of why, what we're wondering.
Okay, I think, I think I understand what you're saying. You're asking if Queen Avenue could be straightened out on the east side of the block? So it would essentially...
Even if it weren't straightened out, even if the back of that unit, you could still come out the back of the, you know, you could still come out the back of the parking garage, load onto Queen between 65th and a Half, and enter onto 65th.
Commissioner Pin.
Yes.
And not have any connection to 66th Street.
And you would still have a connection to 66th Street out the other corner of the facility, out of the other corner of the apartment, where you could move that entrance up towards where Russell would meet 66th Street roughly? Anyway, so what I'm saying is this was never fully proposed. This is nothing, just to be clear, this is nothing that was on a piece of paper at this point, but it was, it was talked about why or why not this could have happened, and I think a lot of residents are still wondering why Queen cannot happen.
Okay, I'm going to let the developer answer that question.
Okay, yes, okay.
Could Representative speak to that question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That actually was, that alternative was reviewed by not only ourselves, but the city engineer, and then our traffic study went through the alternative that's currently shown. Reason that the Queen Avenue wasn't, if you will, vacated a portion, then straightened out and come down to 66th, or just all of it dumped onto Queen, is because of the position and the maneuvers that happened at Queen and 66th in relation to Penn intersection. So the other deciding factor really was the CVS Pharmacy has an entrance immediately on their property, immediately next to this, where those maneuvers would happen. So you'd have traffic patterns that would be crossing one another. That would be difficult, somewhat an unsafe maneuver there. So is it possible? Sometimes, in some cases, anything's possible, but when you look at the traffic patterns throughout, the spacing between not only Penn, but then going to the west, this location with Russell was proposed to us as a solution, not only by city staff, but by our traffic engineer to, as a, as the best-case scenario, if you will. A grid system proposed with spacings adhered to provides the best pattern, provides the best alternative for spacing between cars to make a maneuver. So that's, that's why the alternative with Queen wasn't straightened out, wasn't proposed tonight.
And I understand why Queen was not straightened out. I realize that's logistically just doesn't make sense, for your explanations exactly. The question was more, why couldn't it be oriented where if, because originally, one of the original concepts was double-loaded onto, in and out, onto 66th Street is one of the main entrances, and the other one came back out directly onto 65th and a Half. My question is, if they're lined up on both ends of the development, why couldn't this shift towards Russell and this shift towards Queen? That was the point. Queen never, all the way going through, Russell never going through, but you still had traffic going on both sides. And I think this is something that never fully got explored or explained, but yet still seems very feasible to a lot of the residents. And I think this is, this is something that's kind of a hang-up for a lot of people as to like, okay, we, we see other solutions out there, why aren't these options being explained to us clearly? And the only explanation I have personally gotten from anybody is that we don't want the creation of a super block from Penn Avenue to Sheridan Avenue. And to me, the, weighing that against what we could do in terms of traffic and where we could route it down an existing Queen Avenue that will load you back to Penn or take you to 65th without introducing the traffic on Russell, seemed like it made a lot of sense at the time. And so like, I guess, I'm just trying to get some clarification for the residents more than anything at this point, because I, like, I, I understand the justification for all these things, but I, I still, it still seems feasible.
Hi Brian, my name is Dan O'Brien. I'm the architect on the project. I live at 15703 Boulder Creek Drive in Minnetoka, Minnesota. Brian, we have, or Commissioner Pin, I should say, we had looked at that, and the original plan had a door, a garage door, on the south face of the building, directly aligned with Queen Avenue, where it is now. And that would work from a standpoint of grading. To move that door further, first of all, we, the alternative was presented us, to us to extend Russell to 66th and have, and move the traffic off of that part of the building and onto Russell, so that Russell became the main intersection at 66th. And we felt that, we felt that that worked better rather than having a garage door that would open and close and have cars coming in and out of a garage door right onto 66th Street. That was less than an ideal situation. So when, when we were first looking at the project, Russell Avenue was not an, was not an alternative. And when we were told that that was an alternative, it really improved, we thought, the traffic flow on the site. And to move that entrance any further west would be physically pretty much impossible because of the grading of the, of the street of 66th. 66th has a very steep grade throughout the length of our project, almost 12 or 13 feet from one end to the other. So it was just kind of a, it was physically, it didn't work out physically for us to do it.
Thank you. So I think, you know, I was looking at a couple of the comments that the residents had mentioned, and I think one of them that came up a couple times was, you know, one-story reduction overall, period, and why is this not something that is, is feasible as well? You know, because it seems like it's, that the character of four versus three in this area, you know, I, I understand, you know, maximize the density, but at the same time, it's, it's in fitting with the character of the neighborhood, why, why three is not an attractive option versus four stories?
Could the applicant speak to why, why four was, or three was, four was pursued over three?
Well, with all due respect, we, we went to the area, looked at what was available. We researched what was the, the existing zoning on the property, and also reviewed the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan is relatively specific on height, density, and all of the guiding design, if you will. And that's what we used as your, as a guide. We used your guide to design this project. Now, if there are ways we can fit better in the community, such as what you had proposed earlier, we would like to take a serious look at that, yet tonight even. But again, the, the density really isn't something we came up with, it's something that we are following in the comprehensive, from the comprehensive plan.
And, and not knowing the math myself, and I apologize for this, but maybe staff can, you know, help with this. I mean, it's just... I mean, it's just, just three floors on a site like this not meet density requirements for high-density residential? I mean, is there a reason why three couldn't still meet those minimum thresholds? I mean...
Without knowing, I guess, what the unit count would be, it would be tough to come up with on the fly. It's possible that it would fall, it's possible that it would fall below the, the minimum density level for the high-density residential district, but I couldn't say that with any certainty without knowing what those unit counts would be.
I mean, it seems to me off the cuff, it's like we're, we're teething right on the edge anyway. But I'm just, okay, I'm just curious because I just, again, it makes a huge difference in, in just acceptance overall and how people would feel about it, but thank you.
Thank you.
So I've got a couple of questions for staff. You know, we're looking at a couple of different variances here. We're, you know, if we look at the 2040 plan on what we've already approved through this last month to be adopted, where do these variances sit within that 2440 plan? Would they, would we need a request for them as well within that plan?
This, so this proposal does not require a comprehensive plan amendment. The, the properties have been guided for high-density residential development for something like 35 years or so, going back at least to the 1982 version of the comprehensive plan. So a comprehensive plan amendment is not required? I think some of what you're asking about are variations from, variations from ordinances in places where the project was, was close, close, but not exact to, to code requirements. One of those was building height. The high-density multifamily district has a maximum height of 50 feet along the, at its shortest, the building is right in between that 50 and, 50 and 51-feet range along 65th and a half Street. Then of course, it does, it is taller along 66th Street because of the, because of the, the grade fall off there. The... And then the, the other areas, you know, where the, there were two other areas where it did not exactly meet the, the code guidance, and that was the, the building, building coverage and building setbacks.
Yeah, with the building coverage, you know, will there be any, you know, I know we've talked about when building coverage has exceeded a certain percentage, there has been questions as far as runoff versus, you know, holding ponds? You know, will this have any holding ponds?
No, so actually, so while, while the building, while the building footprint slightly, while the building footprint exceeds the allowed maximum, in the mixed-use districts, up to 50% building coverage is allowed. Here it's 52%. Despite that, the, the site actually includes significantly less impervious surface than would be allowed. The, by code, the, the property could be up to 75% impervious or hardcover surfaces. But what they're proposing is actually 66% of impervious surface. So there is more, there's more than the minimum amount of pervious or green, green surface, drainable surface on the property.
Can I just ask a clarification on these lists? Just because the word, the word variation and the word variance are very similar, and I think members of the public might find that confusing. When we process a variance, we have a list of like five criteria that have to be met. Those don't have to be met for this, right? Because this is part of the PUD.
That's correct. In, in a planned unit development, variation, variations to code specifics are allowed in exchange for, for superior cohesive, efficient design.
Okay. And it is looking like they are, they are including other features that if they were to just build this as MR3, they wouldn't necessarily be including like those storefronts along 66th?
That is correct. There, the developer made some design concessions that we were asking for that, were they just coming in with a by-code project? We would not have had the same leeway to, to require those things.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this time?
Yeah, I just, that, I just, this is probably for the developers. You're anticipating that all the residents will be parking in, in the two underground lots that you, and then you have a surface like for visitor type? So virtually there'll be no, you're not anticipating any kind of street parking? I mean, this is some of the issues I think that neighbors are concerned about. But with the two levels underground, that'll be pretty much for your residents. And then you have the surface for visitors and stuff. Okay, okay, so it would be off the street.
Any other questions?
I have questions, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Quam.
First of all, I'm sorry, I'm confused about the resident and the gentleman that spoke who lives at 6539 in the black jacket, sir? Queen, 6539 Queen? So he's within the properties you have secured a purchase order with?
That's correct.
Okay, so I was confused by his share then about... Oh, could you come to the mic for a second? I'll try to speak closer to the microphone. Can you hear me?
Yeah, I think so.
When you shared earlier, I, I guess I was confused. I thought you were proposing you wanted to keep your property, no?
I do. I love it. I have had no problem. I'm just in the process of making it look good.
Commissioner Quam, I, I apologize, but the private negotiations between the developer and the homeowners are not the purview of the Planning Commission. We really can't discuss them at the, at the hearing. I'm sorry.
All right, I, I guess, I understand. I'm concerned that the developers said they were all secured, and just for accuracy, that, that's not true, or, okay.
Yes, I, I agree that there may be issues there. That's something that the developer will have to work out with those homeowners. Again, it's, the application was submitted and was complete. If that doesn't turn out to be the case, and someone does not sell, the development could not move forward.
Thank you, sir. You can be seated. Thank you. A couple more, I have a few more questions. For staff, the developer mentioned that this structure is 12 feet lower than the Frazier community. Does that sound accurate?
Commissioner Quam, I think that was an elevation change, yes, between the general elevation at the east side of the Frazier building, and then the elevation as you're moving east on 66th Street. That does sound correct. There is a significant grade change moving east.
Okay, so how are the height of the buildings compare, do you know? The Frazier...
I'm gonna speak approximate.
Yeah.
Because we, just because. At the entrance, what I was referring to earlier was at the entrance to the interior parking lot, the proposed elevation there is approximately 12 feet lower than the Frazier existing grade at the Frazier building. So essentially, to make this work with the grades going up and down through the site like they do, and making a connection with Russell going from the cul-de-sac to 66th Street, it happens that we are cutting, if you will, or lowering the existing grade there in the proposed Russell right-of-way. So overall height, when you consider, we're 12 feet lower. If you were to look at the roof line, they're a three-story building, we're a four-story building. We're about 12 feet lower, so we're approximately the same at the skyline.
That's, it's clear now, thanks. And then staff, could you remind me what the high-density range is?
So you're asking in terms of units per acre?
Yes.
So current, under the, under the current comprehensive plan, the high-density, the high-density residential district has no, it has no maximums. We did introduce maximums in the new comprehensive plan update. The maximum is 100 units per acre. This project was somewhere in the, in the upper 70s, upper 70s to 80 units per acre.
So there's no minimum to be considered high-density?
I believe, I believe the minimum is 50 units per acre. So then, in the, in the comprehensive plan update, the range would be 50 to 100 units per acre.
Okay, so, thank you. So if we did to pursue the three-story option, I know we don't have an exact number, but at 180 units, if you reduced it 25%, that's 135 units for two acres. So you're well over what the comprehensive, you've cited the comprehensive plan and wanting to, you know, go along with what that says. But at 135 units, and we could reduce because the first floor, I'm sure, will have less units than second and third. But if it was reduced down a story and losing about 25%, we would still be well within the high-density definition that the comprehensive plan is aiming for. So I just wanted to point that out, that there is another option and still meet what the comprehensive plan is striving for in the future. And I understand that we were gonna go high-density to the north, and anyway. All right, that's all. Thank you.
Any other questions at this time? Otherwise, so either we could take the first motion, which is the rezoning, then the PUD and do the amendment to the PUD motion to discuss that, or we could discuss it more informally first. Commissioner Penn, what would be your preference on how to address your amendment?
I've got a quick question.
Yeah.
We were going to, you had asked to give the developer 30 minutes to respond to our question earlier about...
Yeah, so, so my question is exactly about this, about how do we go about discussing this item? And then when we discuss it, I will ask them to speak on their reaction to it.
Would the developer like time to convene to, in all fairness, like to talk about this before we bring this forward? Because I'd still like to discuss it with them before I actually bring this up.
That makes sense. So, do you want to maybe just describe what you're asking? Because people watching online may not be seeing this document. And then we'll give the developer time to respond to their reaction to that.
So I'm just gonna read briefly the, my proposal, and then also the rationale as I have it written here. And so I'm proposing that we approve variances as requested, you know, for the other variances that are up for tonight. If the north and the northwest faces of the structure can be lowered to three floors in exchange for allowing five floors along 66th Street and the eastern side of the building to make up for those lost units. Alternatively, which is not written here, or just lose the fourth floor altogether. I'm, I'm open to either. But the rationale in general is, you know, the solar exposure in the winter months is incredibly important for energy efficiency, road safety, mental health. And I think the residents along 65th and a half, after doing a shade study, which is on the back of this sheet, is, you know, looking at what the sun, what the solar exposure is gonna be like on December, on the winter solstice essentially at noon. You know, I was finding that up to two months during the winter, if four floors were allowed on the north and northwest faces, you know, there would be shade covering pretty much up to the front windows on these, give or take a couple of feet for accuracy, the plans and the building massings. And I tried to be true to the elevations that we were given in the plans and everything else that we have in the grades that we're also given. And so if the building height were lowered to three floors on these two faces, which would remove roughly 18 to 22 units if I just take them one for one, which are there, then that loss of units could be make up, made up on the south and east sides of the building if we allow for five floors to make up for the lost units. And so lowering to three floors would allow for more solar access across the majority of those yards during the peak hours, you know, near the winter solstice. This height change would also reflect the city's policies stated in many places that call for step-down architecture and design wherever possible to make a smoother transition to lower-density land uses, which we are not currently seeing. It will also be more desirable to future developers and residents of that development if their first-floor residents were not bathed in shade for much of the winter. So I, I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm open to looking at this amendment for either proposals, whether you lose the fourth floor or you shift and add the fifth floor along 66th Street. And I apologize to staff if this is, you know, out of, out of context, but at the same time, I, I like to feel like this is why we're also here, so.
Would any commissioner members like to respond? Commissioner Penn, before we ask the...
I tend to agree with you on that one. Having lived next to a development, seeing the height differences going in, chairman, so I'm very sympathetic to that, so.
Okay, Commissioner Quam.
I appreciate your work on this. And I think this, the met count, or the state, you know, that we have the solar access goal, or the state requires we have solar access, so I don't know if that would affect, you know, what you're, you're talking about shade. That might impede that solar access that's required in the comp plan. But regardless of that, I just want to say that I'm, I, I still think that's too big. So I, I'm, I'm gonna advocate for a three-story, or hope for, you know, reconsideration of this. So I'm not, I wouldn't be comfortable, I'm sorry, with five stories on the south side.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak to, is this feasible in your opinion? Is this something you would support or be willing to accommodate?
I, I think it is feasible. What I'd like to do is if we could have just some, just a little time to discuss it.
I think that'd be fine. We could...
Chair, Hebron O'Leary. I think that the commission could vote to continue this item for 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay.
You could even move on to the next agenda item and then reopen this item.
Okay, do we have a motion to continue, let's just say until 8:40 PM?
So moved.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
All right.
Okay. Let's just, let's just pause if you guys are okay with that and wait and finish this. I think it's gonna be a weird mental shift.
Yeah. Just kind of pause here. Oh, thank you.
All right, we are at 8:40, so if we can start things up again and resume consideration of this item, so we're sort of informally discussion, discussing Commissioner Penn's amendment, and is the applicant prepared to respond to that and give us your thoughts on that? Okay, please go ahead and do so.
Check, check. Apologies, my name's David Lundey, I live at 2048 Lower St. Dennis Drive in St. Paul. And in the brief discussion we had with our team here, in the spirit of collaboration and working with the neighborhood and the city and staff, we'd be willing to consider and the proposal set forth by Commissioner Penn in regards to altering our request and changing it to, and Brian worked with me here, sorry, Commissioner Penn worked with me here, in regards to the three floors on the north face and five floors on the south face, as proposed by Commissioner Penn.
Okay, any additional questions for the applicant right now?
No, because that's pretty much the request, right? So, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. So I think just then we'll need time to discuss with staff amongst ourselves on...
Yeah, I mean, then we could actually make, make the motions unless staff have anything they need to add right now.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question, but I'm not sure whether to direct it to staff or the developer at this point.
See who jumps.
Yeah. So based on this, and, and based, if this proposal were to move forward, based on the grading, would that make the five-story elevation about level with the Frazier elevation next door, since it sits slightly below that currently?
No, I think as proposed, the, the, I can actually give you, I can give you a page number where there's a, there's a height and relief comparison. I think that the architect, the architect is probably best suited to respond to the question, but on page 50 of your packet, there's a, there's a, it's got the building materials on there, but that page also includes a height comparison. It shows the building relative to the Frazier property next door. The four stories of this, the four stories as proposed would be taller than the three-story Frazier building, but not as much as one might expect because, because that Frazier building not only sits up higher, but it has that peaked roof as well. So adding a fifth story along 66th Street would certainly be taller than the Frazier building.
And if I could just...
Yeah, I just, yeah, I have a question from Matt and Melissa. Is the setback for, are they, is it going to be equal to the, the Frazier building, what will be back from the street is the same? Is the same, does it have the same setback?
Commissioner Rosenberg, the building, and again, the project team should correct me if I'm wrong, but based on page 34 in your packet, the building is actually setback slightly farther from 66th Street than the Frazier building.
Further back? Okay. Well, I'm from the era when the Frazier school went in, Frazier residents went in, and I remember, I don't know if this will help some, some folks, but after that was built and after we looked at it, and, you know, really the size wasn't as big as we had in our imaginations. Now, I think with five stories, that probably will be a little bit different, but I can remember talking to people after that Frazier building went in, and we're going, wow, it truly fits into the neighborhood. So maybe, you know, we, we think four or five stories might be, you know, overwhelming, but if it's back even further, you're saying, from 66th, because to me, five stories is formidable for a wall right on 66th. And I, but I am going to support your amendment because I do think that that's, your reasoning behind it is pretty, is good. But so, but it was just kind of, it was just kind of a formidable thought of five stories right on Fifth, on 66th. But I also remember back in the 80s when Frazier went in, and then we stood back and said, wow, even the mayor at that time, his name was Mayor Quam, when he's, we both stood there and looked at it and thought, it's not that bad. I mean, it's really fits in with the neighborhood. So that's what I'm kind of thinking, maybe this one's going to be that way too, even with those five stories, because I think that that, I think that could be, be a lot for that street, but the reasoning behind it makes a lot of sense to me. But I'm glad to hear that they will be back a little bit further from 66th then, good.
If I could just ask the developer, do you think you'll be able to keep the unit count similar or the same with this rearrangement?
That would be the goal, and I believe that was in Commissioner Penn's narrative.
Okay. Any other questions for the developer?
I don't think so.
Otherwise, we could begin taking the motions.
I got a question for staff.
Yeah.
You know, so if we look at five stories in the front, you know, it would be giving a variance of plus 20 feet or, or more, I think, to the current variance, you know, would we, would we be setting a precedent for, for the city that you would be uncomfortable with, you know, as far as for, you know, how high we went compared to the current zoning code?
No, I don't believe so. While that, while that would certainly be the, you know, since there haven't been any new residential buildings built in this area since, since 1970s, it would certainly be the, the tallest and the only, we don't believe it would set a precedent that would be out of line with what other nearby zoning districts allow. The, the mixed-use, the mixed-use zoning districts, or the, the mixed-use community district that's in place on essentially all of Penn, the Penn Avenue corridor from crosstown to 68th Street allows six stories. So this, this project would, would be shorter than what could be built someday on Penn Avenue. I miss, I misspoke, the, the mixed-use district on Penn actually allows up to eight stories.
One question.
Yep, Commissioner Quam.
For either of you, wondering, we're talking about the height comparison between Frazier and this development, what is the width comparison? That's one of my concerns, it's so wide that at four stories, it's just going to look really, I think it's going to look so out of place. When I picture how wide this project is, I know we're going to go to high-density, but we could still do that with three, but now even five, and, and how wide is it, do you know, compared to the Frazier? Maybe you don't know compared to the Frazier, but...
No, I'm not sure compared to the Frazier. I believe there were some site examples. I believe though, in regards to the width of it, with the backwards C facing the west, I think that helps to break up just one long wall, particularly when you're looking at it from the west. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Oh, do you know how wide the structure will be? How wide will the structure be that faces 66th Street?
250 feet.
Pardon me?
The, the side that faces 66th will be 250 feet.
250 feet. Do we know how wide the Frazier building is?
Commissioner Quam, are you asking how, basically how, how deep the buildings, how deep the building is, or how, how long it is along the 66th Street?
Along, along.
East to west, I think you're thinking, yeah.
Yeah, from east to west, the, yeah.
Yeah, the, the Frazier property, just to base on the estimate, appears to be in the ballpark of 160 feet long, east to west.
Okay, just the building?
Oh, correct, correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, do we have a motion for the first item, which is the zoning? We'd ask for the amendment to the second item, which would be...
I'd like to discuss this amongst ourselves first.
Okay, just general reactions to the project?
Yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Rudolph.
So I'm really curious, you know, I'm in a unique position where I've got a development going in across the street from my house, you know, and seeing the impact it has, not only in the neighborhood, but you know, as far as some of the height things, where, you know, I've got, I've got a big concern of giving a variance on, on the height, on the height to, to this project. Having seen what three stories across the street already looks like with the shade and things like that, you know, I really, really liked your effort, Commissioner, in looking at the shading, you know, and, you know, and that's a real thing, you know, I think those are my concerns, you know, as far as the height across the street from residents, you know, and making sure that we do hear what their concerns are in that, you know.
Commissioner Rudolph, could you clarify height meaning all around?
So...
Three versus five flights, or is it...
Three versus four, four stories, you know, I think, I think, I live, those of you who know me, I live across the street, just down the street from Chamberlain, going in over near Cedar Avenue, and it's three, going to be three stories across the street from us, which I think, and it's rather, rather large. So knowing four stories, what, what that impact would be, or even 50 feet, because I know, you know, we did some mockups of 30 feet during that process before it came to the planning commission. I can see how overwhelming that could feel, especially being across the street from it.
And to be clear, in response to the amendment that we're, we're going to be considering shortly, does that address that concern or not? Are you still feeling that the three stories is still too tall?
I think going, I think going down to three stories, you know, it does, you know, it, it, it meets within the guidelines as well as the comprehensive plan, as well as the current zoning, and it wouldn't need any variances next to the residence on that portion, you know. It's very close to what we're going to allow on Penn Avenue. We're only a half block, two blocks off Penn Avenue at this point. I'm still, still thinking about it on, on that portion.
Other just general reactions at this point to the project?
Is there going to be a motion?
We can make a motion. It was Commissioner Rudolph who requested that we have a more informal discussion, but if we'd like to make a motion, if we could take the rezoning motion first.
Chair, Chair Haverd O'Leary, members of the planning commission, yeah, we would suggest that take motion, recommended action number one separately, and then, then what, what sounds like, while we don't obviously have an amendment yet, I mean, it sounds likely that motion number two will be divided. We'll come back to that, I suppose, after an amendment is made.
Would we also need a second, another amendment to have what they did with the Chamberlain to make sure that if this does go through and proceed, residents that live next to it, you know, their, their investments are protected from construction?
Yeah, you may certainly add that as a required condition in the resolution.
So the first item is one that, unless that there were a significant change from what we discussed, I think we could do without amendments, but do we have a recommend, a recommendation, a motion to recommend approval of changing the zoning to high density?
Yeah.
To plan multifamily residential?
Yeah, I, I motioned to approve item number one.
Okay.
To recommend approval of ordinance amending appendix one of the Richfield City Code to change the zoning designation of blocks two and three, Harry Tickner subdivision of Lot 15, Richfield Gardens, changing it from high-density residential, which is MR3, and single-family residential R, to a planned multifamily residential, which is PMR.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion of the rezoning item? Okay, I will say personally, the comprehensive plan guides it for this, and I think this seems like an obvious yes to me, so I will be voting yes on this. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to commend Commissioner Penn on bringing this idea forward. You know, we've heard concerns in the past with other proposed developments about the idea of step-down into single-family residential, and I would look forward to this being a very concrete example of how that should look and be replicated, because this isn't the last time this is going to have to happen. So thanks for bringing it forward. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor of the rezoning?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. I would ask for just a motion for the staff item, and then we take amendment separately for item two. So would anybody like to move item two for discussion and for amendments?
So if I move for item two with amendments, and then we discuss the amendment, is that correct?
Well, I am personally requesting that you just move item two, and then we'd be able to discuss and vote on amendments individually, but you can make whatever motion you wish.
I would like to make sure we have the amendments in there as a whole before we vote on them.
And just procedurally, we will, when the motion is made and seconded, we have discussion during that discussion as well, we'll be able to make and vote on amendments, and we don't vote on the original motion until all the amendments have been considered.
So I guess I would motion to recommend approval of the resolution approving a planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan for an apartment development on the north side of 66th Street between Queen and Russell Avenues with the future address of 2,466 Street West with coming amendments.
Okay, do we have a second?
Okay, so just let me get, so his amendments are included in the...
No, we've...
Okay. You guys are, you're not talking.
Sorry, so we will vote on the amendments after we have the seconded and we are discussing the decision.
Okay, got it.
I would like to include the amendments with it, so we, you know, because...
That's what I thought I heard you say.
I think we really need to have them included, otherwise, you know, maybe the amendments don't pass, and all of a sudden I would...
No, but again, you don't, you don't vote, you don't vote on the motion until after the amendments have been discussed and voted upon. So the reality is, we have two, we have two different kinds of amendments. I just really prefer to be able to have those decisions be distinct. So if somebody would be willing to second Commissioner Penn's motion?
Okay, so you, so we're just voting on number two as is?
We're not going to vote on it until the amendments are discussed.
Commissioners, commissioners, just, just to clarify, you're seconding the motion to continue the discussion. You're, you're moving the motion so that you can have the discussion about the amendments. It's just a procedural thing, you're not voting on it as-is, it's just a procedural issue.
Mr. Chair, I'd second the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any discussion or amendments?
Are you waiting for an amendment? I propose an amendment to item two in the recommended actions to approve the variances as requested if the north and northwest faces of the structure can be lowered to three floors in exchange for allowing five floors along 66th Street and the eastern side of the building to make up for lost units. And with the caveat that it, it somehow sticks closely to what I have proposed on this lower drawing, and I don't know how I put that in the language, but I'd just like to ensure that, that there's just a replacement unit for unit.
Commissioner Penn, when you were putting together your work, did you put in a building height for that third story? Do you have a building height for that?
For the third story? Yes.
Could you, maybe you could provide that, and that would give them a benchmark.
Okay, and so I will provide that after this, once I actually get the building. I don't have it written down here, so I'd have to go back to it.
Yes, that would be fine.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Do we have a second for this amendment?
Second.
Any discussion of this amendment?
The only thing I want to say, I want to support this, but I am not crazy about it. I think it's too big for the, for that parcel of land, but I think that we don't have the latitude that a lot of the council, city council does. We have to follow the, the land usage, usage here. And I just want to say to the, to the neighbors, we heard you. And believe me, I, I'm not so sure I'd want that, this in my neighborhood, and I hear you totally. I don't think that having apartment dwellers as your neighbors is going to be a hardship for, on you, other than just some of the logistics that you talked about. But our part, we were all apartment dwellers at one time or another, and I think we have to remember that. I certainly was before we bought our home apartment. The people that live in apartments are just as, are citizens just like we are. I hear you, I hear you. It's going to, yeah, and it's going to put me in, an impact on your community, on your neighborhood. I know. I live, I don't live that far from you. I have relatives that live just down the street from you. I know, I'm in that neighborhood a lot, I know. This is going to be, have an impact. And if we can work, if we can trust the developers, that they are going to look into that and keep, try to maintain that neighborhood feeling, that they profess that they would, then we, hopefully, we will, that will be a good benefit for everybody. Anyway, I'm going to support this. I think it's, it's inevitable, and I think it's something that we just have to, to work with, and we have to trust our developers. I'm saying this more than once, that they are going to be working with our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the amendment? Commissioner Kitzberger?
Mr. Chair, I jumped the gun in my previous comments about how this could be a model for the step-down approach, so I'd want them to apply to this amendment.
Hi, Commissioner Quam.
I'm still going to lobby for the, I think it could be a really attractive reconfiguration with just three stories. It would still be approximately 135 units and very well into that high-density category. I think it would look more, it would just fit in better, and as far as step-down, I mean, they are going to put high-density to the north eventually, so I'm not sure how that will work with five-story, three, and then high-density, once that does get developed in the future, as the comprehensive plan says it will be. So I think the three-story would still be, I don't see why it wouldn't be a viable option and a compromise for everyone. So that's, I'm going to vote against and hope that the developers could come back with a, a different configuration. Thanks.
I, I tend to agree with you, Commissioner Quam, having lived across the street from a new development and knowing the impact of height is huge in our neighborhoods, I really think a three-story could be just as attractive and not need the height requirements for a variance in this project. I will be following you there.
I just wanted to say, I, I support this in large part because it doesn't change the unit count of the development. If, if we were to demand three stories, even if that was financially feasible for the developer and they wanted to do that, that means 45 fewer families have a place to live in Richfield, and I don't, when we're able to get the benefits of that three-story next to the single-family homes and still get those same units, still get those homes to address that really low vacancy rate, I think that's important. In terms of sort of, you know, sharing personal experience, I bought my house in Richfield that I've been living in, in January, and the year prior, I wasn't sure what exactly I was going to do. I did look for apartments in Richfield. I went on a waiting list for an apartment in July 2017, and I am still on that waiting list, having bought my house 11 months ago. So there, there's not enough housing in Richfield. This is the first housing since 1987, apparently, and the first general market rate since the seventies. I think it's great that it can both respond, at least partially, to the neighborhood concerns and still keep this unit count up, which I think we really need. So I, I support the amendment, and I support the, the project in general.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to clarify that I am absolutely in support of more housing. I don't want to give that impression that I don't care just as much about the 1%. I just want to do it thoughtful, what I think is thoughtfully and in, you know, in an aesthetic, in proportion and in a way that's slanted for growth. I, I care very much about the low housing thing, and I want an apartment, an attractive apartment complex there. I think, I think the other two signs were really beautiful, and I know you're not going to do that anymore because of the odd-shaped island pieces left over, but I still think 135 new units is a lot, or 130, whatever it comes out to.
Thank you. Okay, any other discussion on the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so the amendment carries. Do we have any additional discussion or any additional amendments?
I have another amendment. I'm sorry, Commissioner Quam, I, I would like to make sure that I'm not, I've got a question with the staff. Do you know what type of firm, what type of analysis that's called, that they did?
Commissioner Rudolph, I think that you could move an amendment to require pre-construction surveys by an independent inspector.
Do they do pre, pre and post? Do they, they're doing pre and post at Chamberlain, aren't they?
The post inspections are, if there is, I believe the post inspections are only if there are damage claims, then someone will come back and inspect. That's my understanding, but I, I am not certain on that.
Okay. So I'd like to propose an amendment to do a pre and post survey on houses neighboring this development, if it goes through, to make sure that they're protected.
Commissioner? Do we have to define the limits to the boundaries of that, or is that just the immediate homes that are still near it? I don't, I don't know the stipulation on that.
In the, for the Chamberlain project, it's the homes that are immediately adjacent to the project. In this case, immediately adjacent would include the homes that are across the streets. I, I would recommend.
Essentially, the first house that borders, right?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. And then would include Frazier, and does that include anything across 66th, or is that too far probably?
I wouldn't include across 66th.
Yeah, that's, okay.
Commissioner Rudolph, does that represent what you understood your motion to be? Okay.
Commissioners, if I could, just to simplify the motion, if you were to include a dimension of those within 100 feet of the property, that would catch the Frazier property on the, the west side of Russell, that would catch the, the homes on the west, that would catch the homes on the west side of Russell, at least, at least the first, the first couple of homes, and then that would catch the, the houses directly across the street on 65th and a half as well.
Is it 100 feet to the structure or 100 feet to the property line?
I would be concerned about that.
My apologies, that, that would actually catch those on the south side of 66th Street based on the right-of-way line. My, my intent was just to get those that were directly north across 65th and a half, as well as the, the Frazier property and the, and the homes to the north on Russell.
So, so my direct concern, excuse me, sorry, my direct concern would be all those along Russell, if they were to experience the, the construction traffic as well, though, as a result. So does that, does that make sense to say Russell Avenue to 65th and then six, all of 65th and a half, plus Frazier? I don't, I don't know how we can say that. Just list addresses? I don't have those at my, right here, but I...
I'd be concerned about the, the addresses adjacent to the property, you know.
It seems like 100, 100 feet excluding those south of 66th Street would be a reasonable way to describe it, but...
100 feet is not even the distance from the foot to my yard to the back. I'm not sure, I think the streets are 66th, 66 feet wide.
What, 100 feet would include all of the adjacent properties? It would include, it would, I mean, it goes as far as including 66th Street, the properties across 66th Street, which is why I think Chair Haverd O'Leary said, within 100 feet, except those across 66th. I, I think that addresses your concern.
Okay.
Okay, so is that, that the motion that we can understand you made?
Does it still allow for the final two homes down Russell to 65th, though? That's, that, that was, because, because there would be construction traffic up there as a result.
I don't believe, I mean, construction traffic has to come somewhere before that, you know, it'd be coming from 65th, so I don't, I mean, you, you could change the motion if you want to, but I, I don't know that the traffic is enough, in my opinion.
I would like to amend the motion just for the 100 feet, excluding the south of 66th and including the two homes on the west side of Russell up to 65th.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
Okay, so have you, we're saying that's Commissioner Rudolph's motion, and are you seconding that, Commissioner Penn?
I'm seconding that.
Okay. So our, could staff maybe read back what the current amendment being discussed is? I think I heard 100 feet... I think I heard 100 feet excluding south of 66, also including two properties on the west side of Russell, south of 65.
We've got, I've, I can read back what we have here, so there was an amendment to require pre and post-construction surveys, surveys by an independent contractor of the surrounding housing within 100 feet of the property, and including the properties, and including all properties on the west side of Russell, on the 6,500 block of the west side of Russell, excluding property south of 66th Street.
That, that is my understanding, is that, your understanding, Commissioners Rudolph and Pin?
It would be correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
What is a construction survey, and what are we learning from it, and then what are we doing with that information?
Commissioner Kitzberger, a pre-construction survey will come in and document the condition of the home, particularly the foundation, they'll take photos, and then if there is, if there are any damage claims related to particularly, things that are particularly disruptive can be excavation of roads, that type of construction, if there are any claims that there's been damage to the homes related to the construction, then the, the inspector can come back out, and those, those claims will be more easy to process.
Any other discussion of this amendment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries, okay, so now we do have an amended motion to approve, approve a planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan, we have amendments regarding the height being lowered to three feet adjacent to 65th and a half street, and requiring a pre-construction survey of homes that we've described, any other discussion of the full amended motion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries, so, that completes that item for tonight, the next, this will be reviewed by city council, do we have a date for when that will come to city council?
So, the, the city council is considering a first reading of just the, the rezoning item and the road vacation item, but not, not the planned unit development or development specifics tomorrow night, so that'll just be a first reading of the, the rezoning and the road, they would, the city council would then consider the second, the second reading of rezoning and the road vacation, as well as the planned unit development specifics on Tuesday, December 11th.
Okay, thank you, and just as a reminder to residents who have additional feedback, to reach out to their council members before that, and thank you for coming.
Chair Havered O'Leary, and to also keep an eye on the agendas in case that schedule changes, due to the fact that this was a significant amendment, and the developer does has, have a lot of work to do.
Okay, thank you, okay, so our next item would be considering the attached resolution finding that the acquisition of 6701 17th Avenue by the HRA in order to eliminate 145 feet of roadway and create additional green space is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, the property at 61, 6701 17th Avenue is located on the corner of 17th Avenue and a remaining half-block of 67th Street, this home is the only property served by this 145-foot stretch of road, and the Housing and Redevelopment Authority has made a contingent offer to purchase the home, acquisition of the home would allow the city to construct a new garage with access via 17th Avenue, and then vacate and remove the section of 67th Street, the removal of the road remnant would eliminate ongoing maintenance that benefits only one home, and instead create an opportunity for landscaping between the Chamberlain Project pool area and the adjacent home, once this work is completed, the home could be rented and held for future redevelopment or resold, the removal of this remnant of 67th Street is in line with a number of policies identified in the comprehensive plan, additional green space would enhance the transition or buffer between the higher-intensity outdoor use and the single-family homes, it would provide additional landscaping to help dampen airport.
Sorry, excuse me, could, could you take conversations out to the lobby, please? Okay, okay, well, it's just, excuse me, could, could you guys try taking the conversations out to the lobby, please?
Ma'am?
Ma'am, could, could you take the conversations out, thank you so much. Okay, staff, thank you.
Additional green space would enhance the transition or buffer between the higher-intensity outdoor use and the single-family home, it would also provide additional landscaping to help dampen airport noise that could travel between the Chamberlain buildings, and it would eliminate unnecessary impervious surface, the purchase of the home would allow the removal of a roadway that benefits only one property in favor of landscaping that would benefit the neighborhood as a whole, state statute requires that whenever a public agency buys or sells property within the city, the planning commission must review the proposed use of the site for consistency with the Richfield comprehensive plan, and that's all for staff.
Any questions for staff on this item? Okay, I've got a few questions, consistency, what, what comprehensive plan is in effect right now, because the, I know the city council's acted on the new plan, but it hasn't gone through the Met Council yet, which, which comprehensive plan are we considering consistency with?
Right, actually, we did look at both, assuming that our new comprehensive plan will be adopted, in both cases, we talk about transitions between higher-intensity uses and adjacent single-family homes, the current use of this property is as a single-family home, we also looked at the fact that this is in the future proposed to be a redevelopment area, the, the purchase of this home could potentially help that in the future, we could do that by continuing to own the property and rent it for the time being, the option to be resold remains in the staff report to give us some leeway, however, if we did decide to resell the home rather than hold it, we would have to come back to the planning commission to discuss that again.
Okay, my only, you know, concern, first off, it was a little, I was just looking up the history of this property, and I'm, was finding it a little crazy that it's been re-designated three times in a couple of years, from high-density to low-density to medium-density, so almost feeling a little sheepish that I didn't notice that in the past, I, I do find it a little bit unreasonable to be, going through a lot of public effort to create landscaping to buffer kind of the low end of high-density from future medium-density, so I am a little bit concerned with that not being a consistent thing to do with the new comprehensive plan, I'm gonna say I'm choosing to interpret this as the old comp plan, I guess, I, my other question is, when you have this right-of-way, does it have to be given 50/50 back to the adjacent properties, or could the city own this right-of-way and have this, the entire right-of-way be part of a future redevelopment project?
That depends on how the roadway is dedicated underneath, I believe in this case, it would go back to the adjacent property owners, so 50% of it would become.
So the city would be giving up 33 feet and getting 33 feet back for this property that they don't?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, I, I had additional feedback, but it is not, it is beyond the scope of this about the amount of money that was spent on this, but I'm gonna stay in my lane on that, so, any other discussion on this item?
I just have a comment, I want to say thank you for pursuing this.
Okay, do we have a motion for the staff recommendation? Now you just moved the staff recommendation?
I'd like to make a motion to move for the staff recommendation to purchase 6701 17th, is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion of this item? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, do we have liaison reports for the Community Services Commission?
No report.
City Council? HRA?
Yes, so, they actually approved the approval of 6701 17th, they also had a couple grants between, consideration of proof of contract for private development of a few homes in Richfield for redevelopment under Richfield rediscovered, which was kind of exciting to see.
School Board?
No report.
Transportation Commission, 65th Street reconstruction between, like LA Fitness and Nicollet is coming up, and they have an open house on Wednesday, the 12th, and I think that's at City Hall, but I don't have that down, but keep your eyes peeled for that, because that'll be another road construction coming up, Chamber of Commerce, I don't think we have anyone, City Planner report?
Thank you, I just had a couple items to note, that week of the, of December 12th will be a busy one for you, it's our next meeting, our last meeting of the year, on December 10th, remember that we rescheduled that from the end of the month to the 10th, we will have a meeting, there will be an, an item on that agenda, then on December 11th, there is a work session scheduled at 6:00 PM, Min Dot will be back to talk again about the I-494 project, this time specifically about potential local impacts, so less of a broad overview like you got last time, more items specific to Richfield, so mark your calendars for that one, and then again, the, the open house on Wednesday, the 12th, and that's all.
Okay, next meeting again, December 10th, 7:00 PM, so I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks, do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned.